We acknowledge the Bangla people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to the elders past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are present today. So, welcome everybody. We have no apologies. Do any members declare any conflicts of interest of any matter being discussed today, or any relevant change of office? Pat?
I don't have to declare a conflict of interest per se, but I know that there is an item on the agenda for noting which relates to the insurance claims of the council. And I just reiterate that I'm on the audit risk committee for the local government association, which covers WGA insurance.
I think, given the nature of that item, we're comfortable that Pat remains for that item? Yes, Laurie?
Yes, thank you.
Peter, any change for you? Laurie? All good? Okay. Any committee member need to meet with either the auditors, the chief executive officer, CFO, or the chief risk officer? No? Okay. Go ahead. If you do, could you just let me know in advance on that one? Okay, we've got the minutes of the 8th of May. We did have the full set of minutes issued to us as well, which had the confidential matters. So are we comfortable with those minutes, subject to the inclusion of those confidential information that's previously been distributed?
That's the thing, excuse me, is incorrect, item 4.1. So he has the opinion of order of second at that motion. Sorry, I had to, I seconded the motion, but I was an apology.
Okay, all right, we'll fix that. Thanks. Pretty hard to second someone you're not hearing. Any other change? Okay, we subject to accept that recommendation, subject to that minor amendment, as well as inclusion of those confidential matters. Do you have a mover? Thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Good, you hear this time to move it. Laurie, all those in favour? Okay, we'll pass that one. All right, we have the business arising at 15. Cathy, did you want to lead?
Yes, yes, thank you through the chair. I take the report as read. What I do just wish to point out that the items in relation to risk and emergency management and also the review of council, the formal corruption policy, will be coming to the October 2023 meeting, not the 2024 meeting. So apologies for that typo there. There has been substantial work undertaken on the risk and emergency management items, inclusive of business continuity. The executive management team have met once to review the suite of documentation and will be meeting again to review it again. So we wanted to bring it to their committee in its more complete state than what it is at the moment, but substantial work has been done. Probably the one thing that, in looking at the agenda in preparation for today's meeting, it occurred to me that we probably haven't closed a feedback loop coming from the council into the committee in terms of what the council has done with feedback from the committee from previous items. So this item now, I will expand this for future meetings to include a summary update as to feedback from the council back into the committee. But I will take this opportunity now to hand over to Justin and also to grant, primarily to give the committee feedback in terms of the adoption of the annual business plan and budget, and where the council landed in terms of that.
As discussed at the last meeting, prior to going out to consultation council, did adopt a number of, a number of items, two items, about structuring the long-term management in the future whereby from year three, there will be, if there is no change in income projections by that stage, they've built in a assumption around a reduction in management at year and also a reduction in ongoing capital, capital capacity. So while they noted, that was explained in the last meeting as well, they noted the feedback from the audit committee. They did consider all of the items that the committee listed. They did decide to stick to their path of, but they decided on 18 months earlier. Also, with the new structure, I'm noting that there is a time when that path might change. So that is built into the long-term management. And then, as we were going out to consultation, we had CPI built in at 7.5% as an assumption, with a rate increase of 8.5%. CPI came in at 7.9%. Directly, council had played community that that would mean that the rate increase needs to be higher than what was consulted on. The council adopted a rate increase of 8.7%, which was already in the same projections as the previous. So few of the items in the budget were impacted by the change in CPI. So that 8.7% rate increase projected position almost exactly in line with the previous 8.5% with the updated CPI. So, yeah.
Happy to respond to any questions looking that cover.
Okay, before I open it up, Cathy, I think the importance of this item, we'll make it a separate one. We'll make it a 1.6. I think it's worthwhile because as we go through, we want to, I suppose, listen to the council's feedback on what we're providing to them, take learnings for ourselves on that. So I'll open it up first on the annual business plan. Laurie?
No, nothing to add, other than, as I said, as you just said, I'm really keen as much as possible to have as open dialogue and as comprehensive information as possible in terms of what council's thinking is in relation to it. But otherwise, no real questions from my perspective.
Thank you, Laurie. Pete?
No questions of feedback, but just in relation to the importance of the communication circle. One other thing that I think is important in the papers that which would help us in our decision-making is not only that feedback on what's done or thought about, our feedback, but an update each meeting as to what is happening in terms of the contextual background. We were told last time, you know, there's anticipated that we announcements on this and that and the other thing, and this is the view, you know, the future. It would be nice just to have a brief summary each meeting of, well, actually, that didn't happen and it's not going to happen. Yes, that's still, you know, like it might happen because that helped to play into our knowledge in relation to some of the things that we might be able to consider.
Yeah, good point, Pat. I think we need that colour and movement and focus priority of the council. And if any thinking is shifting as well, so thank you for that. In relation to the financial plan, can a copy of that be sent out to committee members, please? The final one? For me, I do note that the council are taking that shorter term view of business as usual, but taking into account if things don't improve where those changes may be. I think it's incumbent upon this committee to look at some of the scenarios, the upside scenarios, that are being potentially projected, to see that that actually then is meeting some of those financial KPIs that we think need to be in place. So, probably not for next meeting, but if you just give some thought. And this is a very high level of, here's a long-term plan, let's overlay if X happened. If Y happened, to see what would happen to profitability and borrowings, I think are the key there. Because that gives us a certain confidence that if it does happen, we're in a better position. But if the upside's not meeting the requirements anyway, maybe there needs to be a rethink from a council point of view. So if you can take that on notice, and probably not next meeting, but the meeting after.
Yeah, well, next meeting probably works well. So just to note that we do, we sort of update our long-term management plan just while we update it every time. Every time we do a review, we do two major updates, I guess, a year when we adopt the budget, but also when we adopt the first budget review with the year-end results. Because obviously, the year-end results will figure out. So we do actually bring an updated projection of the long-term management back to the October meeting with the financials, so we can consider some of those scenario analysis.
Yeah, this is going to be at a very summary level, so it's not detailed. It's purely this option, this is the outcome, so I'm going to get a feel for it. Yes? Yes, Justin?
Might take the option because we don't have it elsewhere on the agenda. I might just give a brief update on a couple of those potential matters that we've touched on in the past. First is in relation to the hydrogen jobs plan and the purchase or lease of land by the state governments from council. We had a meeting with the Office of Hydrogen Power on Thursday of last week. They are getting close to finalizing their assessments of the tender responses. We expect that we will get announcements within the next couple of months. I was hoping it was this month, but I anticipate that this month it will probably come and go before we'll get an announcement. But they have asked us to formally provide them with evaluations we have received. And they've indicated at this point in time that they are looking at all three sites. We've done some initial work and we think that financially the best option for council would be to sell the land, so I just wanted to give the same feedback. We've also had settlements on the, what we refer to likely as the white tech building, so Nicholson Avenue, so that come through just before the 30th of June.
30th of June, yep.
And we also received some extra money in advance from the local government. So I think we have a record deposit on the 30th of June, which was pleasing. The other thing that we are aware is that the Cabinet Task Force has considered a draft regional partnership proposal that is being prepared by the Department of Premier Cabinet on behalf of the state governments in relation to the Spencer's Gulf region, so according to us, the Paul Purrie environment. Whilst we haven't seen what's in that submission at this point in time, we certainly have had input into it and we are very aware that housing, unsurprisingly, will be a key element of that proposal. We also understand that from the Premier's office, a couple of the key stakeholder agencies have been asked to actually formally prepare a project plan for housing within Wyoming. So in terms of new housing stock and hopefully, not hopefully, and associated income in, spread income, we get a sense that the wheel's about to turn. So we'll obviously be able to advise the committee once we get full confirmation of that. But I think we are getting pretty close to having something of, hopefully, significant substance occur in our action, not to this confusion.
Good news. Thank you for that update. Okay, so anything on the actual updates that have been provided at 1.5? Laurie, anything from your perspective?
No, but thanks for the updates.
Thanks, Pat. The only one for me, just in relation to the granular side of the long-term financial plan. So this is the assumptions that go in there. I noticed we've attached that to the ASCOZA review. My perspective, independent of the ASCOZA review, we need to look at that as a committee. So if it's not part of that, just bring it forward to us in relation to that. Just on page 18, the review of the asset management strategy, it's just got pending. Any update in relation to, any concern with that one?
No, so that one will be reviewed on with our normal legislative requirements. So we have to review it within the first two years of the council election. Starting to work through that process now in terms of, we have to review all three of our strategic management plans. So the strategic management plan overall, the asset management plan, and our long-term financial plan are four, reviewed in terms of underlying assumptions, I think. So that will be starting over the coming months.
On, I know it's 2024, which is a period out, just that pending baseball. Purely the question. So Cathy, do you want to comment?
Certainly later in this agenda, we've got a copy of our strategic management framework for the committee's information. And in that strategic management framework includes the timeframe for the review of the suite of strategic management plans, which includes the asset management strategy. We will be bringing a report to the October audit committee meeting with our progress to date in the development and review of those plans.
Thank you. Just if you could, we're the work programme for the month. I know you give a summary of what's in and what's out, but if you're able just to, in those columns, just highlight which agenda item they're at. Just tell them what you're pointing where those items are, say just a minor one. Okay, all right, we have noting the recommendation up there. So do I have a mover? Thanks, Pat. A seconder? Thanks, Laurie. All those in favour? Okay. We're going to move into the loan facility. Grant, are you going to take this one?
Yes, certainly. So my new table was rep. Just to highlight, I guess, one of the key points is that how the loan facilities work. So obviously, all of our loans work almost as over-travel facilities, where we only use them, utilise them as required. And there is no cost to council of holding them. Obviously, we don't want to hold too many loans. It's not, you know, in terms of our LGFA or our lender, they don't want us having too much capacity. I guess this was just a chance, one of our loans was expiring, one of our facilities. So reviewing the limits in terms of what may be required over the next sort of three or four year period where our loans are projected to peak. It made sense while we were renewing the existing loan facility to adjust the limits to get us through sort of that peak line.
Thanks, Grant. I'll go to you, Peter, first, for any questions?
No questions. Laurie?
Yeah, just want to understand, does it have any impact on our sort of financial targets and parameters that we've set? If I've got that additional capacity to borrow, am I allowed to actually spend it and go further outside of what our parameters are? Or is it just an insurance policy?
Yeah, I'd ask that. So one of the actual updates to the Local Government Act was the line was added. So it was always sort of, I guess, like even that council approved loan borrowings via approval for the budget, but that now is explicitly in the act. So council now actually adopts a resolution as at the adoption of the budget each year that sets a maximum loan level. And so we set that at what our budget projections show. So while we might have loan capacity of 30 million this year, sorry, didn't look it up just for this, but I think it's 26.7 million is the maximum loans that we're allowed to go to without getting a separate resolution from council. So obviously, that's part of our role is monitoring that. But the LGFA also do look at that because they've seen that change to the act and they are very big on their role on the insurance council's act with the legislative requirements. So having the loan capacity there doesn't change the fact that we've actually set a loan limit for the year that's separate to that.
Well, I think the short answer is no, because whatever's approved in the budget is what management have to run to. So it's the limits that's captured in the budget, you work to. Anything else, Laurie?
No, I was just trying to understand why we needed the extras. If we did have that scenario that we worked to a budget, we wouldn't really need it, would we? So I was just trying to understand why we've got it, that's all.
I think it's more projecting out to that longer period. And if there's a cash flow issue, you've got headroom for it.
Yep, I agree.
Yes, so we don't have to come back to the committee too often for smaller value CaaS. So as the projections in the long-term financial plan do show need for this loan in sort of year two and three of the plan, but not issue.
Pat?
I guess just to confirm in my own mind, A, I take it that there's no issue from the financing authority in us increasing that if it's within the budgeted amount and they don't look at capacity repay, they don't do. So, I mean, I guess the assumption is that we need to show we can repay this. I mean, that's the other thing, we need to show we can repay it if we use it. But we also will need to show we can repay it presumably in our discussions with them. So I don't have an issue providing we can show we can repay.
And that's part of the credit assessment, but Grant, you want to give a bit more colour?
That's right. So they will go through, so this is obviously to put the application in for the loan, they will go through their process. One of their key parameters is actually the net financial liabilities ratio. And one of their things is if your net financial liability ratio is below 100%, and ours is projected to be, you know, as a plan, that that tends to be a yes, that we will normally get through quite easily. It's when that net financial liabilities ratio starts to go across 100% that they'll look at it more closely and they may actually, they've actually started for some councils recently, over the last couple of years, putting in place caveats, so the lines in terms of council decision-making of over 100%. So they have really started to tighten down. And it's actually a good thing, I think, for the sector in terms of allowing administration to show council things they have to do to keep their lending.
Couple from me, Grant. I'm okay with the recommendation, but it's just more drilling a little bit into it from an information point of view. Given my background, you're probably going to expect this. Do we actually know what the credit limit we have with the local government financing authority? What's the top amount we could borrow? Will we know?
Based, based on that previous, so I think, you know, in theory, we probably could get loan capacity of somewhere around $35 million a month without starting to go into some of those other conditions.
Because I think that's very much worthy of keeping in the back of the mind and we are getting closer to that outer limit that you're not going to get near. With the approval, are there any financial covenants that are put on us around performance, other bits that sit within the agreement or contract with the debenture that we need to make each year?
No, not currently. So the ventures are secured against future council rate revenue. That is our security. Our, as I said, our loans currently don't have any further conditions on them. They, LGFA have started doing that with some councils who, you know, their financial projections, especially their net financial liabilities ratio was starting to look a bit out of hand. So they've started putting some covenants over the loans in terms of, if council, for instance, had built something into their long-term financial plan in terms of savings, they might actually put covenants into that, you have to show how you're doing that. I don't expect that in this current loan agreement, we'll get any of those. But that's always a considerable feature consideration that we're going to start to see.
And so there's none at the moment. With the advance, is there a line fee or standby fee? Because you don't have to draw down, I take it, and it's there for when you need it. So there's no standby fees here?
No, no fees.
Can they withdraw the facility?
Not my understanding from reading the papers, they, there's no call back ability on the loans. They last four, the tenured period, they last four. Obviously, that's when you deal with issues of you starting to have financial issues at that point and might explore a third one.
And when you do draw down, how do you deal with the interest rate risk associated with it? Is it a floating scheme or a fixed scheme? Or has it got a benchmark with a credit clip on top of it? So how does that work in relation to, you know, physically drawing and what it means?
Yeah, so when we draw down a payback, so we, the CaaS themselves are normally on, in their normal state, are held at a variable rate. So the current variable rate is 6.05 and it's pegged to the cash rate, basically. So that will move up and down in terms of cash rate and haven't done a change other than that for a long period of time. There is some consideration with that as a sector. There's been a bit of discussion with the LGFA recently and I think they're looking to see whether they can discount slightly further. But we do have the ability to fix out a portion or all of our ads. So under our treasury management policy, we have a target of 30% to 70% of our loans being fixed. And then no more than 50% of fixed loans mature in any given financial year. And so we, at our normal process at the moment, we fix in July when one will come up and then we look at what period. So administration are actually delegated to fix up to a period of up to five years within those titles. And so that's how we handle our credit, our interest rate risk.
Okay. And looking at this, we're approving or recommending to council they approve the upper limit with the borrowing amount. And then management look at the terms and conditions. So that's delegated to you guys, look at any of the terms and conditions that are associated with the facility. Is that how it normally works?
I would imagine what will happen is for the standard, if it's the standard loan contract that comes out, that we've had previously, this delegation will allow that to be signed by the chief executive and the men. The LGFA would, if they were to put any covenants into that, they would expect a separate council resolution to come through before that would allow that to be enacted. So this is, we don't even allow for the signing of a standard.
And how's that captured in other recommendations?
Yes, it's probably not. We can look at, Justin, I guess in the past, we've probably had to think about that because it has been a very recent change. We can look to put some wording to that effect. And I agree, it's good to have that in there. I would add that the LGFA will not act without due thing. But I think it's good to have it in the.
We just asked that cash advance, so cash advance, the ventures, consistent with? With, consistent with the terms and conditions?
Are existing.
CAD 136? That deals with it? And I think in the first one, we'll just make it the establishment of 11 million borrowing facility to replace CAD 137, oh, 136? Close, CAD 137, when it expires?
Yeah, sorry.
So there, you join the two together.
It should be 137, sorry.
Is it 137 or 136?
Sorry, I had obviously missed the resolution, 137, 138.
Yep, okay. All right, all right, I'll put the recommendation, Laurie. Moving it, Pete, second. We come to that. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move into the entertainment and hospitality policy. Cathy, say this one, or Justin, or Grant?
Grant.
Okay.
Review, thank you. Chair, so yeah, just looking to review this policy. So we adopted it initially a couple of years ago now, in line with Burnside's policy. They've recently gone through a, almost an investigation. And so their policy was sort of considered to be the best one to use at the time. Good thing you're local government, you can sort of copy of people and their experiences. But just as in terms of using the policy, there were a couple of items in there that were sort of consistent with each other in the way that they operate. And so just adding some extra wording to make sure that it's clear how those, how those items operate. But other than that, fairly modern changes to having a taking missions in this.
Thanks. Just a couple of comments. On the page 30 of the papers, applicable legislation, I think you'll find that the name of the independent commissioner against corruption has changed to drop the R, so it's now commissioner.
Okay, yep.
Then, I guess, to some extent, I think, and I understand the need for discretion and the need for flexibility, but to some extent, the policy is slightly vague. And I'm not necessarily sure that the audit see that as a good thing. And, I mean, as an example, on page 32, entertainment expenditure won't be funded from council services, from council sources. All functions will staff over and above existing and approved functions. I mean, so how do you know that something is currently a function for staff that is being funded and is an appropriate function to be funded? So there's a couple of bits like that, which just can lead to, black and white is better when it comes to some of these. And although a lot of people like it to have more flexibility, it actually creates more problems for you in the long term. Because you have to. Because you have to actually argue with people about things and you have to justify things.
Can we take that away as a thing for you guys, not for change on this one, but to look at generally across policies around being directive? And where there is the ability for variation, what's the reporting escalation and control mechanisms that sit around that? So are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, and, and just other things like where you've got hospitality maximum value is $40 per person. But there's not really an indication here of where you get $40 per person. Now, obviously, most people pay it back to ATO guidelines usually on, on things, which might actually give you a greater amount in some circumstances than that. But if it's not, that's fine, but if it is $40, it's a reason. Choosing $40, breakfast, for example, is a lot, but there is not necessarily as, as much. So I just think there's a couple of areas like that, which could probably be tightened up slightly just to stop you from having problems in the future.
Yeah, that makes sense. Some of their other policies do make the ATO rights. Part of this was adding in was, you mentioned earlier about finding that balance between flexibility and not, but I think linking into the ATO one makes sense because they're, you know, doesn't have to be updated regularly, those sorts of things.
Other questions? Laurie?
Just curious, what's the level of expenditure we have on entertainment hospitality per annum at council?
It's pretty low, so our Christmas, our Christmas function is probably the closest we get, but obviously it's actually quite low value per person and falls under the, so it actually paid FPT on it because of the, the threshold, the threshold per person. So I think, you know, very, very low. There might be, yeah, something, I saw it, I think, last year, but we had something when the outgoing council had a function and that was probably a fairly one-off thing. I think of the few years before that, we may have had zero. That actually falls under entertainment for FPT. And in terms of actual expenditure that is entertainment, that doesn't meet with the thresholds, it would be fairly minimal. So Christmas party and.
But what's your budget overall, under £10,000, £5,000, £20,000?
Yeah, we feel that Christmas party is about 10, it's worth, it's not even 10.
In that.
I'd be half of that.
Yeah.
It's, it's very low, we'll take that on notice, but it is very, very, very low. And when we talk about Christmas party, it's not a Christmas party, it's a Christmas function per se. It's a, you know, a, a celebration. And a, and a celebration for all of the staff. So it is actually very, very low.
If you just compare, compare the absolute dollar there, are you comfortable with that, Laurie?
Yeah, thank you, otherwise I'm awkward with the policy. Good to see there's no golf club joining fees included in it.
Really rusty on this because it's been about three decades since I, well, but is the amount that you, in, sorry, in relation to FPT, is that an accumulative amount per person? That's a, per event?
It's accumulating, yes, if it happens a number of times during the year. Yes, that we literally have one event that's all staff.
Your one Christmas party, but like, if a staff member gets, has a number of benefits.
We don't have many functions, the short answer.
Yeah, you are.
From my perspective, very detailed from a policy point of view. And getting into the descriptive side of what's in and what's out, I'm normally looking a bit more broad with the controls and then delegation to the chief executives. I know this stop halting of systems and past practices, but there's a lot of information that goes through a ticker box. And when you look at it, you know, on page thirty-three, the overall of this policy is the chief executive can do what he wants. So you've got all these controls in place and Justin can say, well, I'm going to do this. So, you know, where's the control and oversight of the chief executive would be something to take away and have a look for me if, if you need it at all on that piece there, because you've got all these conditions and you can just override it. So not for the, for whatever, just generally is where's the control mechanisms around that delegation? Just on some of those, I think you've moved some of your pointers out by putting a new type of hospitality in. So I think we've got links back to top screen four, you might want to put two in there as well. And just adding in committees as well, where you've got council members and directors. We've got a committee there as well. So I'll give you those minor ones that sit outside that. So, so for those minor.
Say yes, I agree, you need to have oversight because of the question, controls. But if you look at the Burnside report by the ombudsman, basically the starting point is nobody gets to spend anything on it. And if you do, then, no, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. But, you know, if you do, you have to really justify it. So that's why these policies say yes and say no. So more than you'd get in commercial environment, but.
Yeah, but you look at securannuation where it's the, the financial requirement, just a $50 spend you have as well. So you're sent in the other way as, as well. But I think we can take that sentiment back for you, that what comes to you and say, we'll take that sentiment back, but I think it's going to hold up moving forward to that on this one. Yes, Justin?
I just also wanted that to completeness and transparency that some of the wording in here was put in here to actually probably cater for minus this type of expenditure as well. So this policy applies to myself as well. So the previous policy was, was really on restrictive and there are, we have to have times when I see, we've got the IPs or seen people coming into the city, you have to just go and have a cup of coffee or, you know, have a lunch, you know, basically a working lunch. The, the policy was, was problematic in that regard. So whilst there's a lot of words in there, that's part of the reason why.
All right, okay, so we'll go to the recommendation. And I think we can make it that the audit committee recommends the updated entertainment hospitality policy at appendix A to council for adoption. All right, we've got a mover, thanks Laurie, a seconder, thanks Pete, all those in favour? Okay, approved. All right, we'll move into the financial management policy review. Okay, all right, I'll get it right at some stage, Grant.
Thank you, for the chair. And I think this one, I think there's very little change, the updates are around updating thresholds. Policy's working, it's handled at the moment. Project expenditure, so yeah, happy to take any questions.
Lauren?
Nothing to add there.
Just wanted to confirm the $100,000 figure, does that come from somewhere?
That's internal, yeah.
Okay, the only one for me, on page two-one. Of the top, what I always like to see in a business case is an exit strategy as well. And also any options that were considered. I think that just rounds out a business case. So if we're comfortable to include both of those, Grant, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we'll go to the recommendation and the recommendation will be that the audit committee recommends the updated potential management policy at election aid to council for adoption. Another mover, thanks Pat, a seconder, thanks Pete, all those in favour? Thanks Laurie. All right, approved. Let me catch up with myself. Okay, Grant.
Thank you for the chair. Once again, this one is fairly minor, just a review of a few, a few minor changes to useful lives based on processes undertaken over the last 12 months. So this one, it has a two-year review, we don't expect it to get updated annually with financials, condition ratings and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Grant, I'll go to you, Laurie.
This one's pretty straightforward to me, nothing really to add.
Yes, thank you, Pete.
Questions?
Pat?
Well, there's a few typos, but I can send them through later. Just a question and, it's just me really, but basically at page fifty-one, you've got all assets basically will be depreciated in accordance with the useful life. And then the table underneath has got useful lives which have horrendously large ranges. Most places that I'm used to actually don't have significant ranges or indeed any range. And to me, that's not that useful because I understand why you might want to have a range because you'll have different assets, but as a, as a policy, I'm not sure how useful it is when it says you go to the effective life and then you look at the effective life and as per the, the policy and you've got something that says, you know, 100 to 400 years or, and makes a big difference on the appreciation.
Get a suggestion before, get my name before you try to offer a suggestion, can we get it?
Yeah, I will. Don't comment on that because there is actually a good reason for the ranges.
So this is a big one that, well, as a whole, deals with that and has more struggles with sometimes. I think in this case, we, we take the expert advice that we can get on these ones. So while I think you're right, sometimes this policy is more, is here to reflect actually what we're doing over here rather than the other way around, where we say this is the policy and that's how we go about it. Roads are, in particular, are quite complex in their nature. And no one has the tool of how long some pavements last for roads and they might last a lot longer than what we actually think here. Part of this came around from the changes to the accounting standards from a couple of years, a few years ago, where you can't have residual values on assets that you can't sell. And so this is the experts in this field dealing with some of the complexities that sit around that. And you're right, the answer is we don't, for you know, but I think in many cases, some of these really long life, with life, long life assets, here, commanders actually probably have a ton of lives and they probably last forever. They probably actually do have a residual value, but they can't. And so, yeah, I agree, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those hard ones. The other thing is, we do have quite, within these, there are, you know, building substructures. There are a number of different types. And so I think to stop the policy also becoming, you know, huge in terms of the, the different bits, it's sort of summarized a little bit, but there are obviously, yeah, different types within some of these sub.
Laurie?
My question was, what's the position you usually take with the auditors on this? I'm assuming that you would come to an agreement with the asset life and the, the way you take the policy with the auditors when you're doing your reviews each year. So is it a point of contention or is it pretty straightforward?
It hasn't tended to be a point of contention. They will, they're happy to discuss with the, the experts who do our asset condition evaluations. And as long as they're happy to issue an opinion on, on that, that they're happy to take that.
So we, we've got a policy in place that validates effectively that the decisions we're taking in relation to asset life.
Got that.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I understand that, you know, expert opinions might take it as one and it's all your, just a particular classes of asset, probably no need for that sort of thing when you come to office or office furniture, absolutely understand it for the other. But perhaps in, in that situation, you might put something in the paragraph above that just says, you know, general ranges are below, but, but expert opinion, yeah. Live one, and then you've got something to point to in any discussions.
Yep, comfortable with that. How do you look at it? Did we run this past the external auditors, see if they had any comments with the charges?
I have not, as the charges are filling on, and they would see it as part of the notice, during a year record.
Yeah, mine is any change to policy would be to run it past the external auditors before you bring it up to, to the committee. Because you'd rather deal with the report coming forward. I know this is quite minor, but if we can just make it subject to confirmation with the external auditors, that they're comfortable with the changes. Yes, Justin?
I'm not sure if, come auditors, but in the past, auditors would always want the organisation, including the audit committee, to make a comfortable decision and not pass an opinion on it. I suppose to pass some opinion, but as, subject to the auditors. So it's just a bit preventing, but if the audit committee adopts these and if the audit committee, for whatever reason, are not bringing back the audit committee to revise the, the policy in line with their, their, their advice.
Yeah, obviously it wouldn't work the other way. But again, always run apart, even if to get a view from them, even though they may not approve, at least get a view that they're generally comfortable with it on those pieces. The only other one for me, just on page eight, which is fifty-four, the, the value of that asset management section in the, in policy, what, what's that actually adding to the policy?
Terms of history.
All of that section on asset management, what's the relevance of it, the policy? When you're talking about valuation ranges, so for what, to make sense of the policy?
I mean, I know because it actually is already stuff that's stated in our asset management study which is adopted. So having to remove that section.
Okay, we'll just remove that. So, subject to those amendments, we're happy to approve that. So Laurie, mover, Pete, all those in favour? Thank you. All right.
Cathy?
Over to you.
Yes, thank you through the chair. And this is a summary report that provides advice to the committee as to the strategic management framework that has been adopted by council and also to work that we've done in the commencement of the development of the community plan for what's the future by 2040. It is, I'll take the report as read, other than to say that over the coming months and over the next few audit and risk committee meetings, that the review of council suite of strategic management plans, including the strategic plan, asset management plan and long-term financial plan will come through to the committee for review prior to them going to council for adoption.
Are they captured on our work programme?
Yes, they are.
As individual, so we have to count them out, okay. All right, thanks Cathy, I'll open up for general discussion. Pete?
Questions?
No, are we behind schedule?
Yes and no. It would have been preferable for us to be earlier in the programme of activities than what we currently are. But we're not behind schedule to the extent that it will give rise to a non-compliance with like that one.
And will there be any issues with lining up when we get to spots for, with committee meetings?
I'm hoping not. If, if there is, we can distribute drafts outside of the committee session for further.
Thanks, Pat, Laurie?
Nothing other than to say, thanks for including this stuff in, in the papers because I think it's a really important way to help us to get context of what's going on and what the priorities are. And I'd just encourage as much as possible, we can almost have a little area on strategic discussions, you know, around things like this to help context because it puts everything else into perspective as well. Yeah, so I just wanted to say thanks and wouldn't underestimate the importance of these types of documents for us.
Yeah, that's a good point, Laurie, and something, it like we've got the alert back now from council, I think that strategic discussion place and the track, we may look at a separate agenda item for those. Well, it just keeps it top of mind with the focus and priorities since management. With the focus and priorities since management point of view. I've, I've just got a comment, I'm, I'm okay. My, my comment around on page fifty seven where you've got twenty thousand provisions, I just think you're a bit skinny, a light on in relation to implement the SSO for this, because you might want to run a focus group or bring a test against a sample group or do a probe, twenty grand's not a lot of money, or when you look at all these things you're trying to do. So not looking for comment, it's just a comment passed on. I think you're skinning your numbers, knowing you've got financial strains you've got to deal with.
And, and absolutely, I think that twenty thousand dollars is, is a small amount for this body of work. We will, if necessary, go back to council seeking any changes to that. However, what I will say is that in parallel to this body of work, we are also in partnership with the University of South Australia doing a body of work around investigating Wayland. And there is another twenty five thousand dollars which is university's funding, not council. So in essence, these two projects are going to integrate with each other and will leverage from each other. So, you know, twenty thousand plus twenty five thousand dollars, it helps that naturally be a, a bit more substantial. And I will say in relation to the University of South Australia project, the resources that can be brought to bear with that project and therefore feed into the strategic planning of council include significant expertise from the university in terms of strategic development of a city. And we have also engaged with Charles Landry and Chris Murray from the United Kingdom in terms of bringing their expertise into this body of work as well, all within the parameters of those projects. So I am comfortable that this body of work is sufficiently resourced in order to achieve the outcomes we need.
Yeah, I would encourage the executive that if they are looking for further money, bring that forward quickly. I wouldn't constrain yourself here, normally, well, sorry, not normally, but if there was a chief executive contingency fund that you could draw on, that, Justin, that, that could give you the flexibility. Maybe that's something you look at going forward is around those contingency items that sit within the budget, so you've got that flexibility to move quickly. All right, we've got the two recommendations. Whatever, thanks Pete, second to thanks Pat, all those in favour? Approved, thanks guys. And again, as Laurie said, I think this is, is clear in our decision making going forward. Got some administrative activities now? Catch one of those up. Okay. What would you like to go with this one?
I'll take this one to start off with and then there's detailed questions that come from the committee, I hand over to Irene. So again, we'll take this report as being read. It is presented for information purposes primarily. One thing though, that is not in the report that I will draw the committee's attention to is that our insurance costs from in comparative to last year to this year's, we do now have the invoices from the schemes in terms of the insurances, insurance costs. And in terms of the mutual liability scheme, there has been a five percent increase, so it's below CPI. So it's very reasonable in terms of that increase. And in terms of the work health safety, from the perspective of gross contributions, there is a four point five percent increase in work health safety. So again, we're within the parameters of CPI, so those schemes are performing extremely well. What I will say though, and draw to the committee's attention, the, whilst I mentioned gross contributions in terms of work health safety, the actual contributions required from council are reduced from those gross contributions by a rebate that the council can achieve year on year. And that rebate is based on a performance in terms of risk management across the organisation from a work health safety point of view. Unfortunately, our rebate, which was taken into account for this year's W H S fees, was not as well performing as what this council has had in past years due to some work health safety issues that we've had and, and due to the outcomes of the W H S audit that we've had this year. So it has actually resulted in an eighteen percent increase in our insurance costs for work health safety over last year. What I will say though, in that respect, that our improvement plan for work health safety is very well documented and we are well underway in terms of implementing the improvements across the organisation in that respect. So I do not anticipate that there will be the same sort of impact next year. Sue, I'm not sure if you want to make any comment in terms of that improvement programme or plan that we have in place for this year?
Yes, thanks Kathy, I can confirm that we had our assessment through local government risk services last week and we are track, we are on target to hit a hundred percent at the end of September.
Other than that, I'll take the report as written and take any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, just a question on the, the public life. So fifty percent were skipped on hold, can you give an example of what, what they, that were?
Irene, I might draw on, on you, I will make just one introductory comment in terms of the risk profile or, you know, the, the, you know, the, the the experience or the increase over this year from the previous year in that respect. Whilst we haven't done a deep dive into understanding it fully, the environment under the previous year's data was still mid-COVID. And so there were many less people out and about in the community, which, you know, will, will have affected the claims. But Irene, some examples of what the slips and so on were?
As, as, sorry, sorry, as you would expect, those examples fall under trips on foot paths, trips over tree roots, those sorts of things. And these are unforeseen events and items that have not previously been reported to council in terms of a liability issue in areas where workers has been identified, we remediate that work almost, almost immediately, given that it impacts on our public liability area. And there's also a, I recall, last month, there was a fairly significant incident involving a fall. And the person immediately came to council around the processing a claim and a report. And it actually turns out that it's an old Telstra pit. And what, what we then did was pass that to the appropriate area, so does that answer your question?
Thanks, Pete. Laurie, did I go to you?
No, you didn't, but I had nothing really to add on it, uh, thank you.
From my perspective, it's good. And it does show that these things are not connected to CPI, so they're going to be event-based and reinsurance side that sits with that. Just a question, are the amounts that are included, the value of claim, is that net or gross of any excess that we have to pay?
I'll have to take that one on notice.
In future, wanted to forget the total, total cost on that one there? All right. All right, we have that recommendation sitting there. Thanks, Pat, second to Pete, all those in favour? Good, thank you. Always a good management topic, excess leave. Do you want to take this one, Grahan?
Yes, thank you, to the chair. So, yeah, just wanted to bring this as an item, through information to show the, the new process that we've started to undertake. Obviously, excess leave is a large liability item for council, potential cost area. So this has become an area of focus to, to get this process underway. So thanks very much to Sandra for all that work on this one and getting all the information together and getting everyone working on it. And it's, I think it's happening, working very well, even since we've sent this report through to you guys, there's a few extra people that have laid out passions in and dealt with some of that, that global rate, so I think it was two anyway, even four extra long sources there people. So, yeah, I think as, as noted in the report, this, this is an initial process where we've got some very long-term employees in life balances. And so the process is a bit more complicated this time. All of them have now been, you know, been dealt with or will be dealt with over the next twelve months and the process will come much more straightforward from then on. And we see this as being like a twelve-month review to, to the audit committee to note the progress.
Thanks, Grahan. Pete?
Questions?
No, just to, just to encourage the continued monitoring because annually is there for purpose so that you actually end up not with overstressing those stuffs, staff as well as it having and I think you've been reasonably generous in your approach to getting into it. Do you want?
Laurie?
Looks like it's something that's obviously just taken, you know, the attention of management to actually get on top of it. And it looks like the net position after all of the things is substantially better than where we started. So I look forward to seeing that continue based on what we've got. It looks like it's, it will be under control and if that's the case, well done because it is a, always a perennial complex area. So, yeah, keep at it.
Thanks, Laurie. Going forward, could, could we just have the percentage of FTEs of the overall workforce? It just gives a size and perspective because twenty out of thousands, a bit different from twenty out of fifty on that going forward. And the year leadership too, in that group, because it's always good to walk the talk when you're bringing your policy in place. So I'll just leave that as a comment, not on that piece. It's always good if the leadership team are on board in, so that they're making changes as well. So just a comment. So we've got the recommendation sitting there. Mover, Pat, second to thanks Pete, all those in favour? Okay, thank you. We're okay, so the kitty guy? Okay. All right, so we've got the procurement report there. I don't know if there needs to be any additional colour, it's fairly persuasive, so we'll open up for questions, Laurie, anything from your perspective?
No, pretty clear from my perspective there, thank you.
Thank you, thanks Laurie, Pete? Pat?
Pretty standard, apart from, I was just curious, provision of services to council? Got no clue what the services are, so to know whether that was a reasonable figure or whether it was, you know.
Thank you, thank you. This is the former manager legislation who was engaged with council to cover periods as we were recruiting for a manager governance and then as local government reform came to the table. This is Andrea Malone and she is providing mandatory training services for the council under the local government reforms. And she is also the identified contractor in the event of there being, being any complaints under council's behavioural management policy. So the value of this contract may not be the total, it will only be as needed. So she's a boy.
Open for that, Pat? I'll go to you, Pete?
Yeah.
Okay, and one of those days. I've no comments, so we've got the recommendation. So thanks Laurie, but second to Pat, all those in favour? Thank you. We've got the disposal of land and other asset policy.
Just make an introductory comment and take this as read. This is on, was on the work schedule for the audit committee's review, but it was actually reviewed and went to council prior to us settling the work programme of the audit committee, as was the following policy that's on the agenda. So it hints them not coming for the committee's recommendation to council because they've already been to council. So our apologies for that, but it was just the alignment of programmes that caused that to happen.
Sure, if there's a material issue, we'll take your comments on board though?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll open up for general discussion. Pete? Pat?
Typos again, if you, if you, a couple of typos if you're interested. The other thing I noted was you've deleted the dot point on page ninety eight of the papers, dot point that is ensuring the best possible outcome achieved for council rate payers. I'm presuming that's because it's seen that it potentially might be inconsistent with the curious as to why that was deleted.
Brown or? Page ninety eight.
I thought dot point two actually covered that completely and thought it was a duty action. Yeah, sorry, it's accountability and responsibility of council rate payers, that was, that was me, but just at that.
Thank you. The only one for me is on page one oh three, where you've got a process around market, but then you've got the exception to the chief executive, which is appropriate. But is there any reporting or controls on the chief executive then? It's right down the bottom. So you talk about a trade-in or, or public option or open tender, but Justin can override any of that. So is that reported anywhere or captured anywhere?
You know, at the moment, they have, they have a policy.
Just take that on board, have a look at it. It's not inappropriate that your chief executive's got it, just that, just how you then make sure there's probity that sits around it.
Keep looking at it, yeah. Because this actually sits as like a subset of the procurement policy almost, so.
After the exception, hang on there. Okay, so just take that comment on board?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we've got the recommendation. Thanks Laurie, second to Pat, thanks, and all those in favour? Approved. Okay, code of practice?
Take this one as read.
Okay, take it as read. Laurie?
Nothing contentious from my end.
Okay, this one from me, on page, and, and again, I'm like, oh, the policy, just on page one oh nine at seven, twelve and eight, one, are we actually doing those activities? Can you just take that on board to just confirm that you're doing that?
Seven, twelve instead. Eight, one?
Eight, one.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Who made this to say it?
Confidentiality reviews or confidentiality orders are reviewed on an annual basis and a report, which is very detailed, report goes to council by February.
Do we need to have a look at that?
I don't think so. It's very, very, very procedural in nature. I will say to the committee that when the committee orders an item going into confidence, those confidential orders are also reviewed by the council in the area of each year as to whether or not they should be released or not. So, no, I don't believe the committee needs to see them.
Okay, so then you may want to consider when it comes up for review again, you just pointed that that report is going to council, so it's just standard reporting to council?
Can do.
It's controlled, but not needed for this one?
Yep.
Okay, we have our recommendation up there, the mover, thanks Laurie, the second to, thanks Pete. And we're supportive of that and influence discussion paper. Justin, do you want to take that or are you going to hand it to Kathy?
Just my conclusion to make. So this item came up very late, just prior to releasing the agenda for the audit committee. It deals with the review of the current legislation that prevails in South Australia in relation to lobbying as it relates to, to my government. The paper is calling for submissions or feedback on that subject. And it has a due date, um, maybe August, I forget the date, it's the eighth of October, so. So just given the timing of this audit committee meeting, we will visit and see if there were any comments that the audit committee wanted to make. We will take this matter to council for the purpose of determining whether council wants to provide a review. But given the nature of the sort of committee, would it would be appropriate to at least give your line of sight to the review being undertaken and see if there is any comments that you wanted to make?
Well, thank you for that. Pat?
Sorry, no comment.
Kathy, did you want to, are you waving at me or?
Not really, I, I just, we'll add to what Justin said is that we will develop a draft. Uh, not really. I I just, we'll add to what Justin said is that, um, we will develop a draft a submission in response to the discussion paper and circulate that out of session to the committee, rather than it coming through into a council, into a committee meeting.
Okay. Pete?
Questions?
Laurie?
Yeah, just curious, is this, is this an area that we think will be um, something we have to monitor closely, just given the relative high profile of hydrogen projects and other projects in the area? And people wanting to get things like access to land or different, different types of things underway? Is it where we see it's um, it's got the potential to be very important and very relevant to us, given what's going on?
Through through the chair, uh, yes, I think it's just part of our broader, um, for the corruption sort of awareness being mindful of the influence that could either be applied upon us, significantly, um, inadvertently us applying influence on others. Um, I'm just mentioning this not because I've got any concern, um, but just again, for complete transparency and accountability, that's um, the the executive officer that um, works for the Spence Gulf Cities, I think is listed as a lobbyist. Um, so that's, uh, we can partner. Um, so um, I am just mindful of just bringing that to the audit committee's attention. I'm not doing that because I don't have any concerns per se, but um, having worked particularly in other jurisdictions, um, and notably Queensland, um, lobbyists up in Queensland are much more prevalent than they are in South Australia. Um, but when you start talking about some of the development opportunities within our patch and particularly around housing, um, and broader development opportunities, it is something that I just need to be mindful of. So, um, but what it's worth, I'll just add those comments.
Thank you, Justin. I think it'd be worthwhile to me. I think it gives us a priority and focus. It gives us a profile as well. Got some people who can add value to this review as well, given that, as Laurie mentioned, the level of activity that's going to have be happening. I don't think it hurts us to participate in these type of activities. So we have a note there. Um. We've had a mover. Thanks, Laurie. A seconder. Thanks, Pat. All those in favour? Okay, we accept the recommendation. Given we're going to move into confidential confidentiality items next, I think we might take a. So I need to.
Seconder.
And a seconder, that means. So thanks, Laurie. Thank you, Peter. All those in favour? Okay.
Fifteen minutes.
I'm up to fifteen minutes. Support. Um, I will take a motion to um, open the meeting again. So thanks, Laurie. Seconder, Pat. All those in favour? Okay, we're back into the meeting. Uh, and now we're looking at moving into some confidential items. So can I have a mover to move into? Standing in conversation. Thanks, Pete. Seconder from Laurie. Okay, all those in favour? All right. Um, we'll now move into item five. We have no motions with notice. Item six, we have no motions without notice. Next meeting is third of October, uh, eleven o'clock. And then we follow the session with the council members, which should be a good time. And so we close the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Oh, nine. Thanks, all. Thanks.